Mayor, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for October 20th, 2022, to order at 7:00 PM. On roll call, we have Council members Ballastiri.
Here.
Dennis?
Here.
Mongolbeck?
Here.
Pellegrine?
Here.
Sheridan?
Here.
Council President Fasolo?
Here.
Mayor Coletti?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Sineh. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have a nice evening set forth here. We're going to be celebrating our girls softball their summer league. I'm right with that, correct? It was a summer league? Okay, good. And we have another presentation also. So let's get started. Normally, I do the prayer, but there's somebody out there who's more qualified than I am, and he has a closer connection to him than I do. Pastor Ron, would you please?
Good evening, everyone. Today, the President shall come here and stand before you. We read by our heads. As we have the loving God of creation, the government body and the residents of Elmwood Park, we have gathered together tonight for a meeting. We ask you, Lord, that your grace and your mercy is sufficient for us all. You're God of order, and we ask you, God, to shower this chambers with your order. Shower this chambers with your loving presence, day by day. Anoint the heads of everyone with your awesome and God of peace. And Father God, we know that there's this order, you're nowhere beyond. So we are asking you, in your divine presence in this chambers, and to be with each one of us during this meeting. We ask you, we magnify your majesty and your dominion in his name, and we all say, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Ron. Everybody, please remain standing for a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Whereas Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now therefore be advised that the meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing a special meeting notice in the record, in Herald News, and by posting such notice in the office of the borough clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building. And also by notifying interested citizens, said notice was posted and transmitted on January 8th, 2022, and published on January 11th, 2022. Sineh?
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes. We have July 21st, 2022, regular meeting; August 4th, 2022, work session; August 18th, 2022, regular meeting; August 18th, 2022, executive session.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
First by Pellegrine, second by Sheridan. On roll call, we have Council members Ballastiri.
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Mongolbeck?
Yes.
Pellegrine?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Council President Fasolo?
Yes.
Minutes approved. At this time, we will have a recognition of Cheryl Ismussen, Fire Inspector of the Year. So I would like to call up Steve Kolchak, the fire official.
On October 5th of this year, the Bergen County Fire Prevention and Protection Association had recognized Cheryl for being this year's Fire Inspector of the Year for 2022. I'd also, I asked the mayor and council, and I appreciate them, Board Administrator Mike Fligno, for also recognizing her for her hard work that she's done for not only the borough, but the citizens and the businesses. She started here with the borough back in December 2019, and I know I'm going to embarrass her a little bit, but one of the first days that she was here working with us, I took her out and started getting her feet wet at one of the inspections. And I didn't find this out until a couple months later, but we walked into one of the big warehouses in town, which is in Dixie, and we started going through a whole bunch of stuff, and she kind of, her jaw kind of hit the ground and pretty much kind of thought to herself what she was getting into. A few months later, I kind of found out that she was ready to quit on the spot that day, that she thought she was getting in over her head. I'm glad she didn't. She's a great asset to not only the Fire Prevention Bureau, but to the Borough of Elmwood Park and the citizens and their businesses. So I thank the mayor and council for also recognizing her, for getting this award.
It reads, the mayor and council would like to recognize Cheryl Amuzin. Did I pronounce that right? For her achievements in receiving the 2022 Fire Inspector of the Year Award. We appreciate your commitment in your service to the Borough of Elmwood Park, October 20th, 2022. Okay. Okay. Council comments? Councilwoman, can you initiate that?
Thank you, Mayor. Cheryl, congratulations. Thank you for your dedication and hard work to our town. Really appreciate you, and just wanted to say congratulations again.
Councilwoman Ballastiri?
Cheryl, I also like to congratulate you on a well-deserved honor. You should be very proud of yourself, as we are of you. Thank you for your dedication to Elmwood Park.
Councilman Mongolbeck?
Thank you, Mayor. Cheryl, congratulations. Thank you for your dedication and hard work to our town. Really appreciate you, and just wanted to say congratulations again.
Councilwoman Ballastiri?
Cheryl, I also like to congratulate you on a well-deserved honor. You should be very proud of yourself, as we are of you. Thank you for your dedication to Elmwood Park.
Councilman Mongolbeck?
Thank you, Mayor. As the fire commissioner from the council, I'm always very proud of the work of our fire marshal's office, as well as the fire department at large. I want to recognize all the members who are here to support Cheryl. The mayor and council always stands with you and will work with you to give you all the resources and the things you need to succeed and do your job. So I congratulate you, Cheryl. It is definitely a reflection of your hard work, but also a reflection of the office of the fire official. I was involved in the process when we brought on Mr. Kolchak a few years ago, and looking at where that department was then and where it is now, I could not be more proud of the decision we made at that time, and it's truly a reflection of both Mr. Kolchak's work and Cheryl with you in this award. So congratulations and thank you for everything you do.
Councilwoman Pellegrine?
Yes. Congratulations, Cheryl. What a great honor to be recognized as Fire Inspector of the Year. Such a proud honor for you and your family, as well as our whole community. Wishing you continued success in your career. We're all proud of you, and it's so well-deserved. And as I'm getting to know you more and more, you're such an asset to the whole team here. Everyone loves you. There's never, nothing but kind words said about you, and that says a lot about a person. So we're so happy to have you, and I look forward to bigger and better things coming from you. And thank you to our whole fire department, our fire prevention unit. Thank you, Steve, for all that you do. Comes from the top, and you're the leader there, so thank you.
Councilwoman Sheridan?
Thank you, Mayor. Cheryl, thank you for everything. There's only two words that can possibly say it's well-deserved. Congratulations.
Council President Fasolo?
Thank you, Mayor. This recognition is so well-deserved. I know that all of us are extremely, extremely proud of you and the work that you put in every day for our borough, keeping our residents, our businesses, and everybody safe day in and day out. So keep up the good work. Definitely well-appreciated and well-deserved. Thank you.
Cheryl, congratulations once again. I think the area you are in, as far as public safety goes, is very, very important. I don't know if you folks noticed, though, over the years, because our codes have been getting more stringent, a lot more lives are being saved, and there's a lot less fires. Am I accurate with that statement, Stephen?
A lot less major fires.
I always like checking with Stephen before I make a statement, and I kind of just wing that one, but it's because of the likes of these people that are here tonight, and Cheryl, that affords us to have, let's say, we can go to sleep at night and not have to worry as much as we did years ago, and for that, we're very grateful. Thank you very much. Moving along.
Yes, next we have presentation to the Berkey County Girl Summer Softball Team, senior U-14B National Division Champions. I would ask that the coaches come forward, along with Mayor Coletti and Councilwoman Ballastiri.
First one is Sophia Candillaria.
Excuse me, Coach. Before we go on, okay, you could say what you want. Is people still interested in what they did?
Well, throughout the years, we have the rec program, which is very well, girl do a great job. And then through the summer, we have a tryout process. All these girls try out, and throughout the week, we came together with, I believe, some three girls, and we put that together, and we put it very in town throughout the county. Mala, Franklin Lakes, Suma, that, waiting for one game. Alexis Gorgadi.
I don't believe she said that, but Maggie Misesi.
Yara Darmay.
David Diamond.
Okay, these two, I think the next one, too.
This one, I know, contact with me, she said she's not able to be here.
Caitlin.
Kenneth Sivers.
Gianna Ramirez.
Lani Pedigun.
Jada Hayes.
Katrina Shaker.
Emily Miseski.
Patricia Mustachio.
She couldn't be there also tonight.
Kayla.
Kenneth Sivers.
This is our coach, Frank Delgotti.
And our coach, Brian Dunn.
Thank you. The fortunate boys.
Yes, please.
I don't want to talk to you on two lines, two lines.
You take that line.
You're on the front.
Take the word.
You know me.
They just got called, young.
It would be a bad time to talk to you, man.
I was talking.
How many of us?
Why are you looking at me like that?
I'm still a kid.
I'm still a kid.
I still can't shut up.
I'm not a kid.
You are out of your mind.
You have to be there all the time.
They're going to bear all the negative things they're going to face.
Mayor, at this time, we will, Mayor, at this time, we will have council comments.
Ms. Dennis?
Girls, congratulations. You guys, as Coach said, you're the best of the best. You were chosen for this team. I had the pleasure of watching a couple of your games over the summer, and they were so exciting, and I was so proud to boot you on, not only from your field, but sometimes from my house. I'm waiting for your Facebook updates from your parents to see if you guys won or not. You guys played an amazing season. We're very proud of you, and thank you to the coaches for being so dedicated to this team. We really appreciate it.
Councilwoman Ballastiri?
Yes, I also want to congratulate the Elmwood Park Girls Softball Senior Summer Team on winning the championship. I had the pleasure of attending a couple of the games, and I tell you, it was very exciting. So I see all the smiles, so we know everyone played with heart, which is a wonderful thing to see. I'm very proud when our EP teams bring their accomplishments before the mayor and council. I also want to thank their coaches for their time and commitment for the girls. But we can't forget the parents, because I know these parents, and they're there every game, every practice to support their daughters. So thank you for that. Congratulations. We are also proud of you up here, and we hope to see you here again next year.
Councilman Mongolbeck?
Congratulations to the girls, to the parents and coaches. Thank you so much for everything you do. When you guys go on the road during Travel Ball, play in other town, and win, and play as a team, it's a positive reflection of Elmwood Park. You're making Elmwood Park look good, and we thank you and thank you for that. So congratulations. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pellegrine?
Yes, how wonderful, National Division Champions. Congratulations to the team, coaches, and parents. Hard work pays off, and you have all shown that tonight. We, as a community, are so very proud of all your achievements. Enjoy the moment, because you deserve this honor. Wishing you all continued success in all that you do. Congratulations.
Councilwoman Sheridan?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations. I was in your spot about 30 years ago. I know how it feels. Enjoy the feeling. Congratulations.
Council President Fasolo?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start off by thanking the parents and coaches who put in all the hard work every single day to keep the children of this community active, even as it gets harder and harder every year to stay involved and stay active. So thank you all for doing that. And congratulations to all the girl athletes. Your hard work has paid off and given you the national champions, National Division Champions. And just like Councilman Mongolbeck said, you go on the road, you represent Elmwood Park, and you represent us well. So thank you for that. We're so proud of you, and your whole community supports you. So thank you. Congratulations.
Well, young ladies, there's an old saying that some of us old-timers out there might remember. You reap what you sow. And I think that sums it up. The effort, obviously, that you gave, and the results actually was tremendous. To bring home that pride and that winning spirit to Elmwood Park, it's great, and it's good for the next segment of girls coming in at your level. They'll realize what it takes, the commitment, being resilient, all those good factors to make a team a winner. We all want to be winners, and God knows that, who wants to lose? And if you do enjoy losing, you're a loser. So we don't want that. You didn't want that, and obviously, you did not achieve that. You achieved a great moment, and we thank you very much.
At this time, we will take a five-minute recess, and then we will reestablish a quorum when we come back. Thank you. Mayor, I would like to reestablish a quorum. On roll call, we have Council members Ballastiri.
Here.
Dennis?
Here.
Mongolbeck?
Here.
Pellegrine?
Here.
Sheridan?
Here.
Council President Fasolo?
Here.
Mayor Coletti?
Here.
We have a quorum. At this time, we will have our CFO, Roy Rittitano, give the Best Practices Report.
You're not on. Hello? There you go. Good evening. So the law requires me to appear before you to go over the governor's checklist. This is basically about the fifth, sixth year now we have to do this. The questions change year to year, and proud to say, through the administration, and specifically with Mike this year, helping me on this, we were able to come up with literally, at a 24 affirmative, yeses you need, we were well over 30. We had two, four, five noes on the entire survey that is scored. There were many questions that are unscored, meaning that it's not part of the governor's checklist, but they want to know what municipalities are doing. So with that, very quickly, one of the answers I had to put was number four. I'm sorry, not four, hold on. Revenue. Yeah. So one of the questions had to do with the amount of money that we take in with the building department. So this has always been a bone of contention with the governor's office, that whatever you're taking in for the code officials, that money should be used specifically for the code official. The problem is, and we've said this decades ago in the Government Finance Officers Association, that's all well and good, but what happens if you have a bad year? You have to lay off your whole staff, because you don't have the money. So we do it here pretty well in Elmwood Park. We literally reserve that money for at least one to two years out, so that it's very stable, the building department. Answer, another no question was number 20. And the reason we didn't clear out ordinances over five years is because some of these projects are still underway. Again, we go back to the COVID situation. So there's been extensions beyond, specifically for capital projects, that obviously are still underway. So we couldn't cancel bond ordinances greater than five years. Number 30 was the same thing. It had to do with unfunded portions of the audit, and there'll probably be an audit coming next year, and basically, we're not going to kill these ordinances if we're still working on some of the projects, the old projects. One of them was the generator system. We still had some work we were doing on emergency generators. The final question of the survey had to do with electric vehicles, and specifically, have we purchased any vehicles that are hybrids or electric? And we haven't at this time. And if you recall, two weeks ago in California, they had a disaster there, because their police force had some hybrids, and they couldn't patrol the highways, because they had electric brownouts. So there is no right or wrong answer for here in New Jersey right now, in reference to electric. So with that said, we will be getting our final payment of state aid around December 1st, and we will be in 100% compliance. This report will be signed off by Sineh and Chief Fligno BA. Sometime Monday or Tuesday, we'll file it with the state on the FAST system. Any questions? Alrighty. Thank you. Thank you, Roy. Have a good night.
Next on the agenda, we have ordinances on first reading. Resolution R-351-22, introduce ordinance number 22-27 on first reading. Be it resolved that an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to authorize the undertaking of streetscape improvements to Mola Boulevard from Linden Avenue to Philip Avenue in buying for the Borough of Elmwood Park and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $510,000 to pay the cost thereof, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Be passed and adopted on first reading, and be it resolved that a final hearing on said ordinance will be heard in the municipal building on Thursday, November 10th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, or as soon thereafter, as same can be heard, at which time any person interested in said ordinance can be heard. Be it further resolved that the borough clerk be and she is hereby authorized to advertise an illegal newspaper, a notice of introduction and final hearing as required by law.
Mr. Fligno, would you like to break this down for us, please?
Mayor, this is part of the streetscape improvements to Mola Boulevard that we've been working on. We're piggybacking a few grants together and going as far as we possibly can. The goal is to get from Market Street on Mola all the way to Route 4, and we will go as far as the money will take us, and then reassess it from there.
May I have a motion on the ordinance?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
First by Pellegrine, second by Council President Fasolo. On roll call, we have Council members Ballastiri.
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Mongolbeck?
Yes.
Pellegrine?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Council President Fasolo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have Resolution R-352-22, introduce ordinance number 22-28 on first reading. Be it resolved that an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to authorize the improvement of Grove Street from Mola Boulevard to Vivini Street in buying for the Borough of Elmwood Park and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $325,000 to pay the cost thereof, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Be passed and adopted on first reading, and be it resolved that a final hearing on said ordinance will be heard in the municipal building on Thursday, November 10th, 2022, at 7:00 PM, or as soon thereafter, as same can be heard, at which time any person's interest in said ordinance can be heard. Be it further resolved that the borough clerk be and she is hereby authorized to advertise an illegal newspaper, a notice of introduction and final hearing as required by law.
Mr. Fligno, from my memory, a large part of this is grant money. Is that correct?
Mayor, the majority of the project is, we had shortened the amount of paving we were going to do, so we could stay as close to the grant total as possible. I believe the overage is negligible.
Okay. May I have a motion on the ordinance?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
First by Councilwoman Pellegrine, second by Council President Fasolo. On roll call, we have Council members Ballastiri.
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Mongolbeck?
Yes.
Pellegrine?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Council President Fasolo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now moving on to ordinance for second reading, we have Resolution R-353-22, introduce ordinance number 22-26 on second reading. Whereas a public notice has been given by the borough clerk that an ordinance entitled, an ordinance establishing a four-way stop at the intersections of Garden Ave. and Miles Street, and to amend Chapter 7 of the Code of the Borough of Elmwood Park, titled Traffic, more specifically Section 7-21, titled Multiway Stop Intersections, was introduced and passed at a meeting held on Thursday, September 15, 2022, and that further consideration of this ordinance would be taken up at this meeting. And whereas all persons interested in said ordinance were given an opportunity to be heard concerning the same. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Elmwood Park that an ordinance entitled, an ordinance establishing a four-way stop at the intersections of Garden Drive and Miles Street, and to amend Chapter 7 of the Code of the Borough of Elmwood Park, titled Traffic, more specifically Section 7-21, titled Multiway Stop Intersections, passed on final reading.
Motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second. Anyone from the public here to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance alone? If not, I will close the public portion. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilwoman Pellegrine, second by Council President Fasolo. On roll call, we have Council members Ballastiri.
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Mongolbeck?
Yes.
Pellegrine?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Council President Fasolo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda, we have Resolutions R-354-22, Approval of Payroll, R-355-22, Approval of Bills List, R-356-22, Appointment of Counselors for the 2022-2023 School Year Aftercare Recreation Department, R-357-22-
Next, we have Resolution R-352-22, introduce ordinance number 22-28 on first reading. Be resolved that an ordinance entitled "Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Improvement of Grove Street from Mola Boulevard to Vivini Street in buying for the Borough of Elmwood Park and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $325,000 to pay the cost thereof, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds." Be passed and adopted on first reading, and be resolved that a final hearing on said ordinance will be heard in the municipal building on Thursday, November 10, 2022, at 7:00 p.m., or as soon thereafter, the same can be heard, at which time any person's interest in said ordinance can be heard. Be it further resolved that the Borough Clerk be and she is hereby authorized to advertise an illegal newspaper, a notice of introduction and final hearing as required by law.
Mr. Philigno, from my memory, a large part of this is grant money. Is that correct?
Mayor, the majority of the project is, we had shortened the amount of paving we were going to do so we could stay as close to the grant total as possible. I believe the overage is negligible.
May I have a motion on the ordinance?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
First by Councilwoman Pellegrine, second by Council President Fasolo. On roll call, we have Councilmembers Ballastiri.
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Golebeck?
Yes.
Pellegrine?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Council President Fasolo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now moving on to ordinance for second reading, we have Resolution R-353-22, introduce ordinance number 22-26 on second reading. Whereas a public notice has been given by the Borough Clerk that an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing a Four-Way Stop at the Intersections of Garden Ave. and Miles Street," into amend Chapter 7 of the Code of the Borough of Elmwood Park, titled "Traffic," more specifically, Section 7-21, titled "Multiway Stop Intersections," was introduced and passed at a meeting held on Thursday, September 15, 2022, and that further consideration of this ordinance will be taken up at this meeting. And whereas all persons interested in said ordinance were given an opportunity to be heard concerning the same, now therefore be resolved by the Mayor and Council of the Borough of Elmwood Park that an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing a Four-Way Stop at the Intersections of Garden Drive and Miles Street," into amend Chapter 7 of the Code of the Borough of Elmwood Park, titled "Traffic," more specifically, Section 7-21, titled "Multiway Stop Intersections," passed on final reading.
Motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second. Anyone from the public here to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance alone? If not, I will close the public portion. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilwoman Pellegrine, second by Council President Fasolo. On roll call, we have Councilmembers Ballastiri.
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Golebeck?
Yes.
Pellegrine?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Council President Fasolo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda, we have Resolutions R-354-22, Approval of Payroll, R-355-22, Approval of Bills List, R-356-22, Appointment of Counselors for the 2022-2023 School Year Aftercare Recreation Department, R-357-22, Authorized Vacation Buybacks, R-358-22, Resolution to Refund Overpayment, R-359-22, Resolution to Refund Overpayment, R-360-22, Resolution to Redeem Third-Party Tax Link, R-361-22, Authorize Current Estimate Number 4, Change Orders Number 3 and 5, 2021 Drainage Improvement, R-362-22, Authorize Current Estimate Number 1, FY 2021 CDBG 13th, 14th, and 17th Avenue Improvements, R-363-22, Point Crossing Guards for the 2022-2023 School Year Police Department, R-364-22, Appointment of Part-Time Dispatcher Police Department, Michael Faschetti, R-365-22, Authorize Release of Road Opening Performance Bond, R-366-22, Authorize Contract with Riley's Outdoor Decor, R-367-22, Maintenance of 435 River Drive, R-368-22, Approve Handicap Parking Space, Second Street, R-369-22, Approve Handicap Parking Space, Henry Street, R-370-22, Approve Handicap Parking Space, Orchard Street, R-371-22, Approve Handicap Parking Space, Linden Avenue, R-372-22, A Resolution Authorizing the Submission of an Application to the New Jersey Department of Transportation's Transportation Alternative Set-aside Program 2023, R-373-22, Authorization to Execute Sure Service Agreement with the Elmwood Park Board of Education School Security Officers, R-374-22, Appointment of Firefighters, R-375-22, Appointment of Junior Member, R-376-22, Resolution to Approve the Consent Agenda.
May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
First by Councilwoman Ballastiri, second by Councilwoman Pellegrine. On roll call, we have Councilmembers Ballastiri.
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Golebeck?
Yes.
Pellegrine?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Council President Fasolo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have departmental reports. We have Recreation Advisory Board Meeting Minutes from June 13, 2022, and the Library Board Meeting Minutes from July 18, 2022.
Motion to accept the reports?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, reports accepted. Now we have applications. We have St. Leo's RC Church Raffle for November 11, 2022, St. Leo's RC Church Raffle for December 11, 2022, April 2, 2023, and May 5, 2023.
May I have a motion to accept the applications?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Applications accepted. At this time, Mayor, I will turn the meeting over to you for council reports.
Council reports. We'll start with Councilwoman Ballastiri.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, first, I want to just commend, it was an excellent event with the police meet and greet with our police department. It's always a joy to watch how they interact with our community. Thank you, Chief, for bringing another great event to the community. Also, they did the Build the Bear... uh, Build the Bear... Build the Pumpkin! Which Build the Bear is another thought, right? Build the Pumpkin was a real hit by our recreation department. Our recreation department is also looking for after-school and morning care counselors for 2022-2023 school year. Contact the recreation department for more information. Basketball registration is open for grades 3 through 8. The rec is also looking for basketball coaches. K through 2nd grade basketball clinic is on Sunday mornings beginning November 6 through December 18. $150 registration fee, and there's still openings. On Saturday, October 29, from 9 to 10:30, the Elmwood Park Recreation will hold their first-ever paw parade and costume contest. So bring your little puppies and enter them into the contest. Thank you, Councilwoman Dennis, for bringing this idea forward. On Saturday, October 8, Councilwoman Pellegrine and I held Council Corner. Residents and our colleagues joined us. Mayor Coletti was our guest speaker and shared a lot of valuable information and answered questions from our residents. We will have our next Council Corner sometime in February, and we'll announce the date once we have it. Please join us for open discussion. We will also have a guest speaker join us as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say congratulations again to Cheryl and the girls' softball team. We're very proud of both of them. The last few weeks, I've had pizza with the police and pancakes with them as well. So thank you for feeding me and feeding our residents, interacting with them. Looking forward to our next meal together. Like Councilwoman Ballastiri said, we're having our hollow wolf paw parade on the 29th from 9 to 10:30. So please come out. Whether you have a puppy, like I don't have a puppy or not, you can come out, watch, and just be entertained by it all. And the next Board of Ed meetings on November 22, and progress, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Golebeck?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to start off by complimenting my colleagues, Councilwoman Pellegrine and Ballastiri on Council Corner. Good discussion about a lot of different subjects. And then at the very end, we took a picture. And when I was looking at that picture when it was on social media later on, it was all people that really care about the town. And that's not to say others that weren't there don't. But that you just look at it, and you know, everyone had... showed up in the middle of a Saturday because they care. And they have a thing or two to say about all the different subjects going on in town. So I think that's a nice thing that we... that you guys continue to do. I'm very excited that ShopRite, the Insera ShopRite, is starting their process here in Elmwood Park. It's been a long wait, and I want to reiterate, and it's been said before, that that company received all the approvals they needed from Elmwood Park, and the delay in start was just solely on their end. They weren't ready to go. There was nothing on the borough's end that was holding up. But Mr. Insera put out a letter maybe a week ago announcing that the project would start. Many were excited about the letter. Some were pessimistic that it was just a letter. Lo and behold, there is real action happening on the site. So very, very excited for that. That's jobs, better food options for our residents, and a nice chunk of new tax revenue for the borough. So very, very exciting. Tonight, we pass the bond to fund Phase 1 of the Mola Boulevard Streetscape. This is a vision that started about 2, 3 years ago, and we started... We had conversations about how nicely lit and adorned our Market Street is. But the Mola Boulevard, which is the main drag in Elmwood Park, especially at night, there was a little to be desired. Dark and not as prominent as it should be. So we have $240,000 going towards... of state money going towards Phase 1, lended to Philip Avenue on the Boulevard. That project will go out to bid this year and hopefully start in the spring. We have an additional roughly 3/4 of a million dollars from the Philip Avenue to Route 4 corridor. And we passed a resolution tonight, 373-22, to yet again apply for more grant money towards the Streetscape on Mola Boulevard. It is my hope that within three years we'll have an entire Mola Boulevard with beautiful lamps, beautiful landscaping, and better pedestrian and vehicle safety features. So these are all very, very positive things happening in Elmwood Park, and I'm just proud to be a part of it with all of you and the residents. Thank you, Mayor.
To your point. Thank God for the grants. Very important. Bring us in, say, a million dollars when we finish, Daniel? And that'll be a million dollars coming from state, not from the taxpayers of Elmwood Park. Councilwoman Pellegrine?
Yes, good evening, everyone. My Board of Health update. On Saturday, October 1, the Board of Health had its second annual Celebrate Senior Day. What a wonderful day for all. Great entertainment, great food, free giveaways, and many vendor tables sharing important information. Thank you to all of our Board of Health members and all of the incredible volunteers who made the day great. A special thank you to Chairperson of the event, John DiMarzio, for all of his passion and hard work to make this event so successful. As the liaison to the Board of Health, I'm so proud to work with such caring people who really work hard to make positive changes to better our Elmwood Park community. So I want to thank them all. The next Free Rabies Clinic for Dogs and Cats will be Wednesday, November 17, from 5 to 7 p.m., Location Firehouse Number 4 on Mola Boulevard. The next Board of Health meeting is November 14 at 7 p.m. My police update. Last Saturday, we had our third annual Elmwood Park Police Meet and Greet. Many resources were made available to our residents and businesses. The event was combined with Build the Pumpkin hosted by our recreation center. Free pizza, good music, free caricatures made these two events extra special. Thank you to all of our officers who made the event great by interacting with our community members. Also, a big thank you to Tony Ann Taylor, who was our photographer that day. She took many pictures of our residents enjoying the day. On Friday, October 28, Elmwood Park Police Department and the Elmwood Park Recreation Department will be hosting an indoor trick-or-treat event. There will be a haunted hayride, magic show, and scare house. Location Recreation Center, time 6:30 to 9:30 p.m. On October 10, our police had their first Neighborhood Watch program meeting. It was a very interesting meeting with many ideas and much discussion took place. The meeting was very well attended. Their next meeting will be on November 7 at 6:30 p.m. in the council chambers. Come be a part of the discussion. The ShopRite update, my colleague touched on it a bit. But for those of you who didn't read the letter in the paper, I would just like to read what Mr. Insera wrote. I was on the phone with him last week because I called and I said, "You know, our residents are not believing that this project is really going to start." And he said, "What do you need, Lorraine?" And I said, "Could you please write a letter and post it, and we'll share it all over so that our residents..." It's coming from you, Mr. Insera. He said, "I'd be happy to." So for those of you that didn't see the letter that are watching at home, will watch this. I'm going to read his letter. Dear Elmwood Park residents, we are pleased to announce that after a couple years of delays caused by the COVID pandemic, construction will begin on the new Elmwood Park ShopRite within the next few weeks. Weather permitting and without any unexpected delays, we anticipate the opening of the store to be in the fall of 2023. We look forward to being part of your Elmwood Park community and forming a partnership together to serve you better. Working together, we can and will make a difference in your community. I just have to say, on a personal end of this, Mr. Insera has been working with the Residents Assistance Program for a few years now. He gives us many donations to help our residents with the pantry, with gift cards for the holidays holidays, so we can buy food for them. And he has been just a tremendous individual to work with. And he's not even in our community yet. This is what I'm so impressed by. And some people say, well, you know, we're going to all be shopping there and he'll make money. Okay, a lot of people make money and they don't share it. He shares it. And he shares it with a lot of different communities. So I'm just so happy to be working with a man like that and a company like that. And I think a lot of more, you know, good things are going to come out of this partnership together. So I just wanted to say that to all of you because I actually spoke with him and I feel very confident we're headed in a really good way. So, thank you, Mayor.
Definitely a good man. Not only does he help us out in all these different entities, but he's going to bring up a food business into an area that is desperately in need of it, this ShopRite. So he's all good in our eyes, for sure. Councilwoman Sheridan.
Thank you, Mayor. On October 12th, Wednesday, the Elks had their Halloween party. I just want to reach out to Police Chief Fligno for the officers that came there. The kids really appreciate it. I just wanted to say thank you. The Elmwood Park Homeowners Association, this month is Fire Prevention Month. The meeting will be October 26th. Steve will be there with Cheryl at 7 o'clock at the Senior Center. All residents are welcome to come. I'm sure you're going to learn a lot about, as far as fire prevention goes. If you're going to attend, please RSVP to Linda 201-982-4919. For the Senior Center, the Bergen County Executive, James Tedeschi, is having a Bergen County Thanksgiving Day Dinner, Thursday, November 24th, from 10 to 1:30, over at Garfield Senior Active Center on Midland Ave. Reservations are required. The event's open to everybody in Bergen County, senior residents. You have to RSVP by the 22nd. Transportation will be provided. If you have any other questions, you can call 973-478-0502. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council President Fosolo.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start off by saying, these council reports are getting longer and longer every meeting, and that's a good thing. I think that this community has come a long way after COVID, especially after COVID, for bringing the town together between the police department, the council, the rec department. There's just something going on every day. And there's people that have been in this community for so long that are finally able to get out and do things. And new families coming into our community that before you wouldn't know who the police chief was, you wouldn't know who the mayor was, or some of your council members, or people who work in your community. But it's great that we're bringing the community together. And I commend everybody, the council, the mayor, the police chief, the direct department, for just the relentless work in, again, bringing the community together. And that's what it's all about. I also want to commend Councilman Golbeck. I know he worked really hard on the Boulevard Street Gate for a few years, even before I was on the council as well, while you were mayor. His vision was to put those decorative lightings all the way down the boulevard, and this was the first step in making that a reality. So, great job. I also attended Council Corner on Saturday, and I felt it was one of the most personal events that I've been to, sitting at a round table with residents who genuinely had concerns and maybe don't want to come to a council meeting and speak on a microphone. So it's a great event to commend Councilwoman Balaustri and Councilwoman Pellegrini for putting that together as well. So, thank you. Bye, guys.
Thank you, Councilmen. Well, the council has hit on numerous events that have been transpiring in the last couple of weeks. I will hit on the fact that the cannabis board just met and they voted to open their meetings going forward to the public. I know there were some residents that were interested in hearing about that, so that will be happening. Also, the American Legion is hosting a Night at the Races, October 22nd, this Saturday, at 7:00 a.m... PM, PM. Yeah, I don't think they'll be there 7:00 in the morning, huh? So let's get out possibly and help them with their fundraiser here. And it's always a great evening, Night at the Races. You get to gamble a little, make a few dollars, lose a few dollars, and you're enjoying yourself with your friends and family. And I had the opportunity last night, attending the Hall of Fame Dinner. Once again, they were celebrating the athletes that come from our town, also where they've gone in life. It's very informative, and to see the achievements from some of these people that grew up next to and were part of our everyday lives, and they went on to become great citizens, it's a great moment. And the organization has been in existence for 31 years, and I hope it's in existence for another 31 years. That's all I got. Let's move along here. I'll open a motion to open the floor to the public.
Second.
Anyone from the public care to be heard? John, I'm going to ask you to come up here because that microphone's not working. We're in the process of having the sound system looked after. Up here, John. See, otherwise it doesn't get on the recording. And that's when... I've been getting complaints about that.
Okay. I guess I'll sit, right?
I see you brought a...
I got my posse here. I got the crew.
Some bodyguards there.
My name is John DiMarzio, and I proudly serve on the Elmwood Park Board of Health. And I'm here along with other board members. We have Doris Wexler, we have Jeannie Freitag, who is the treasurer, we have Lucia Intrieri, who is the vice president, and we have Jeanette Randazzo, who is the president. And we are a board consisting of six volunteer autonomous board members. And we also have a part-time secretary and a council liaison. And who would have thought that we could have ever had an event like this? And I'm just so proud of every one of them, and I proudly serve on this board. I'd like to thank a lot of people because there was a lot of moving pieces in the event. And I'd like to thank Mayor Coletti for his blessings and his kind words of encouragement, and for allowing us to do what we do for the community. I'd like to thank... We'd like to thank Chief Fligno for seeing the vision we at the Board of Health have and had, and for giving us the departments and staff that were needed. We'd like to thank the state and county officials and dignitaries, representatives from Senator Menendez's office, Jeremy in Carolina, the New Jersey Department of Consumer Affairs, Representative and Congressman Bill Pascrell, Bergen County Executive James Tedesco, Commissioners Zer Sullivan Ortiz Amoroso, Bergen County Sheriff Curriton, Assistant Kylie Livornia. We had Sergeant Min Pike from the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office, Bergen County, Paseo County Department of Consumer Affairs, Dennis Nyland, Bergen County Board of Social Services, Alan Leroy Dier, and the Bergen County Division of Senior Services, Tess and Fonda, who we absolutely adore. Also, we would like to thank each and every assistant and aide that works with these departments and divisions that go unrewarded and unrecognized. Importantly, I would like to thank the Elmwood Park Board of Health. I'd like to thank Jeanette Randazzo for the incredible work that she's done and for just being there all the time for everything that I needed. I'd like to thank Lucia Intrieri, who donated a lot of her time, and she donated a lot of gifts between her and her family, and she did a lot of work. And I'd also like to thank her for the energy that she had when she came back from Italy because it was like the next day, so she didn't have time for anything. I just, you know, I thank God for her. I'd like to thank... We'd like to thank Sound Surge for the banners and the signs that they provided. And we'd like to thank Jeannie Freitag for coming to the American Legion and the AARP meetings and promoting the event and worked with the raffles along with Doris. We want to thank Doris for getting the donations and for all her invaluable time. Like to thank Clarissa Proctor for all her support throughout the years, and Juliana Galambisky for her stellar job at manning the check-in table at the event. Importantly, I'd like to thank, and we would like to thank as a board secretary, Marlene DiStefano, for all the administrative work that she had done, which helped us to solidify us as a reputable and professional board. Thank you, Marlene. We love you. And Borough Clerk Shanae Morris, thank you so much for allowing us to, just to let us, you know, utilize Marlene because, you know, she really did a lot, and I thank you so much for allowing us to do so. I want to thank Lorraine Pellegrini for being the best Board of Health Liaison, and I've said that over and over again, for her words of encouragement and her personal contributions for the event, and for being a friend and confidant. I want to thank Councilwoman Tanisha Dennis for her contributions through the email and what's happening in Elmwood Park, and for the other posts. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Terri Sheridan for supplying the food, a lot of the food that we actually gave to the people and to the community, so that they didn't have to pay a penny. Thank you so much for that, Terri, and for her work with the veterans, because there were a lot of veterans and awards there too. So thank you for that, too. We would like to thank the rest of the council also for their support. DPW Recycling Coordinator Joan Appiniola for representing her department at the event and for the two donations that she got from Maria's Bakery and Kraus's Chocolates and Paramus. I'd like to thank Fire Prevention Steve Kochik for working along with us and helping us transition from the outdoors to the indoors. That was pretty incredible, so thank you, Steve, for that. The Borough Finance Team, thank you. Elmwood Park Mola Public Library, Jennifer Cullen and Leanna Ross. I'd like to thank Tishawn Warren, the Rec Director, for allowing us to use the Rec Center as a backup for the event. Romano Intrieri for all his invaluable help. And thanks to the kids at the Rec Center for helping us with moving things and for their contribution. Thanks to Shaqib Fakori for supplying extra garbage bags and refills in case we needed them for outdoors, which we didn't need, but thank you so much and for your encouragement. Thanks to Christine Cobb, the Director of the Senior Center in Elmwood Park, for all her help and support and for the usage of the Senior Center. We love you, Christine. Officer Michael Sammarone for coming to the event and setting up a table at the last minute to represent the Elmwood Park Police Department. And importantly, we would like to thank the amazing vendors who came out to help us and support us from the nonprofit sector, from the organizations, clubs, hospitals, and companies supporting the senior community. We'd like to thank Renee Marie Testa Adams, the Language of Love, and Bob Kern and Al Russo for supplying the sound system and for their incredibly beautiful voices and entertainment. I'd like to thank Ridgewood Symphony Orchestra Woodburn Quintet and Donna Dixon and the Angelic Sounds from the quintet. I'd like to thank Toni Ann Taylor and her company, Just a Love Story, for donating all her quality, artistry, hard work, and time, because she's the one who gave everything for us, for the photography and all the images, which an email would be going out to people with all the images that we had on it. Be ready for that coming up tomorrow. We'd like to thank iHeartRadio and WKTS Bartel for being the pro that he is and for help to run things smoothly. I'd like to thank Joe from American Cruisers, Hector Car Connects, American Legion, and Mike Candelosi for his personal car. Unfortunately, we weren't able to use the cars this year, but next year, let's see. We're going to have the classic show next year, so God willing and a great day, we'll have that as part of the event. I'd like to thank Rep. Residents' Assistance Program, founder Lorraine Pellegrini, Dion York, and Angela Fava for all the donated medical supplies and their, just their love that they had at the event and for helping make it an incredible event. Donation-wise, we'd like to thank Acme Markets Foundation, Avanti, Amy's Royal Treatment, Balloon World, Ian for giving us a great deal, Birchwood Deli, Blue 42, Connects 4 NPO, which is Roe and David, Trader Joe's Westwood, Conti's Funeral Home, D&amp;N Deli, Ed and Rosaria Venezuela, Elmwood Park Diner, Francesco's, Gloria's Forest, Heights Floor Shop in Hasbrook Heights, the Intrieri Family, Kraus's Chocolates, Paramus, Leonie's Pizza, Lorraine and Pete Pellegrini, Markell, Maria's Bakery, McCrum's Bakery, Mike's Auto Service, Nicola Moncada from LeBros Restaurant in Little Falls, New Jersey Giants, New Jersey Jets, Parkway Diner, Payless Liquor and Deli, Riverview East, ShopRite and Sierra in Marlborough, ShopRite, Glass Brothers Royal Shell Park, SK Nail Lounge, Soaring Car Wash, Taste of Italia, Vilma's Nail Salon, Vito's Pizza. We'd like to thank Jennifer Randazzo, Carol, Deborah, LePrenoc Ferrando, Laura Tracy Cole, James DiMarzio, and the kids at the Rec Center for helping out. I'd like to thank Frank, Doc Schup, and Michael Bowe from the state and local veterans groups, the youth advisory group, and of course, thank you to all the seniors. These guys, like, they turned out, like, even when the weather was not going to be so great, these seniors came out and they really loved what... It was just incredible. And you'll see some of the expressions on the faces of pictures that were taken. And most importantly, I have to say, I thank God for allowing me to have breath and to have this vision and to just be able to speak in front of you all and for having to them.
We certainly covered it all, John. I can see why you are...
Somebody would like to say something other than me.
Please. Come to the microphone. Come to the mic, please. Have a seat, young lady.
Well, Mike pretty much said everything. As far as, you know, John said, we just want to thank everybody, and obviously the mayor and council, just for your participations and your support. The main thing is getting the support from the town for allowing us to have our vision go to our seniors, and we want to continue doing that. So thank you again, and thank you, my board. Thank you very much.
Well, we thank you for putting on such a beautiful show. And what was fascinating, that whole event was supposed to be outside, and on short notice, they moved it inside, and you would never know that it wasn't originally planned that way. It was smooth, the way it was set up. And you're right, a lot of seniors had good smiles on their faces. Very good. Excellent. Next year, we'll try and top it just a little bit. I don't know... Just a little bit, because I don't know how much bigger you can get and how much better, but we're progressing. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak? Here comes an old friend.
Yeah, I'm back!
Yes, he's back.
I'm back!
Kenny's back.
Yes, I'm back! And I got news.
Have a seat, Kenny.
Hello there. I have news for you guys.
Okay.
There is a wrestler called WWE, oh WWF, I meant, and she's in Elmwood Park, she lives in Elmwood Park, and keeps getting announced that she's an Elmwood Park woman, lives here in town. And we get all... You should see how many times she gets invited to Elmwood Park. She keeps saying every time she comes in the wrestling, she starts saying Elmwood Park. And I say, Mayor, she got the belt before. She just won the belt a little while ago, and she just lost it. But I think she should get something for the town, because she announced her name a town a lot. And I want to tell you that how I feel in my heart that we should give her something to the lady.
Kenny, I agree with you, Kenny. I'm actually...
Her name is Vigil...
Yeah, Liv Morgan.
Liz Morgan, right.
Her actual name is Gianna Daddio.
Right.
I actually am very familiar with her. I went to school with her.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
We were friends in high school.
Right.
I agree. We should bring her, we should invite her and recognize her.
And get her something for what she's doing, because she kept announcing our town big time, not little, big time.
Yeah, because...
And you would like to hear Elmwood Park on your town. You hear it all the time on the TV screen.
Yeah, when they announce her at, when she comes out at WWE...
Since I've been... I mean... I've been gone, I keep hearing her name announced, and it keeps saying Elmwood Park, New Jersey. And I said, Mayor, we gotta do something. When I saw it, I said, I have to talk to the mayor, because I know him, and I could tell him, we gotta do something.
Well, I'm 100% backing you. Whatever you think we should do, I'm with you.
Right. That's what I wanted to tell you.
And I think the council is, as you heard Mr. Fosolo say, so whatever we have to do, let's do it. And what else? What else you have?
I have to ask you a question. Chief, when you gonna move that truck in the flood to my house? I'd like to know. There's a motorcycle van and a trailer is in the corner of my house. I live now 31 Mobber Street, and that's right on the corner of the city hall land, but that's okay. But I'm just saying, it looks like... Another thing, I need a little bit about parking, because I have a lot of issues. I'm parking right now because my nurse had a warning, and she take care of me every day, and she has to park in the cows. And she don't know where to park. And I'd like to know if I can have some parking spaces in your parking space, in your parking lot, because my house is right on top. I should get something.
I'll figure it out. How does the traffic lights stop and talk to you?
Yeah? Because I'd like to know that, because I should have some parking, because I'm in front of the house, in front of the building. Your city hall is right in front of me. I should get something.
What number do I know?
31 Mobber Street.
I'm going to stop by Mobber.
All right. But I mean, just saying to you, it's an issue there. And then I didn't ask you, Mayor. My friend, he's in the audience right now.
Is that the fellow with the mayor?
Yes. He's my friend. He... So that one, not twice, three times, almost an accident on Marcus Street and Locust, I mean, Mobber Street, going on that corner by your building here. He's in three, four times.
Accidents?
Yeah, almost accident, very close.
Almost. Okay.
And I want to tell you that...
Thank God that it was almost to start off.
Right. But he said one time was a truck or trailer almost hitting somebody. And he said that was dangerous.
Yeah. Well, it is what it is.
I know.
You know, this town was, the roads were designed 100 years ago and...
But I think we need is a traffic light there.
A what?
A traffic light.
A light?
Yeah.
Well, we can ask the police chief, he's right here, to look into it.
Actually, I have a better idea. I've been thinking about this. We should try to see if we can make Locust a dead end, so that people can get on 80 and all that traffic doesn't funnel in as a cut-through to Elmwood Park. I don't know if it's doable, but I think it's something we should investigate. It'll significantly reduce the traffic Kenny's talking about.
Right.
On Locust Street.
So it wouldn't come through no more?
Correct.
Well, you got to do your study.
If the mayor and council want me to look into that, I could look into it.
This is really interesting story. To me, really, you don't know how the traffic is down here. It's crazy.
I know.
It's crazy. It needs something done.
We'll take a look, Ken.
All right. Don't forget.
See that, Kenny? You're getting a lot of things done here tonight.
Oh, yes. I'm doing pretty good tonight. I'm in a roll tonight, but I'm so happy one day I'm back. And I go to make sure I come to your meetings every week, every time there was a meeting, I'll make sure I be here.
We missed you. We thought maybe something happened to you.
I was a little sick, but I feel better now.
Oh, you were? Okay.
Yeah, I was sick, and then I had a problem with the house, and I had to get that fixed because there were a lot of old stuff. But we finally fixed the house now. It look a lot better.
Yeah, it does. I took a look at it before we came in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Spent a lot of money there.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
That's what we like, though.
That's right.
Spend the money in Elmwood Park.
That's right.
All right, Kenny, anything else?
I wanted to say I'm happy I'm back.
Yes. Thank you very much, Kenny.
Thank you. Bye, everybody. Thank you, bye, everybody.
Just like old times.
That's right.
Anyone else care to speak from the audience? Yes, sir. Please come up here.
Do I need that?
No, you don't, but otherwise I won't get recorded. And when you... You'll just hear our voices and we won't hear yours, and you'll think we sabotaged you maybe.
Yeah, okay. Well, since I'm sitting here, brings a question. I can't remember the last time that mic worked. How long is it going to take before we get that one fixed?
Well, we're on it now. Having a specialist come in, see if we can have it hardwired, we're on it.
Okay. Question. I've been complaining about the dead end of Miller Ave, the all the debris, the overgrown property. For the longest time, nothing's been done. This summer, with these locust flies, really got to me because one of my dogs inhaled one somehow. It was a $1,500 hospital bill. So I looked, and there's a borough ordinance about overgrown properties, 16 inches of height, or whatever the number was. And when I called the building inspector, he says, that only pertains to residential properties. So we have an ordinance that only pertains to residents, which the town doesn't have to follow either. Brought that up to him. Lo and behold, the next day, Scott Cars was there to look at it. He says, yeah, this is well overgrown. We'll be back next week to do it. That was two months ago. I have now, if you look at those trees, on all the dead branches, you could see the pods of lanternflies forming with the eggs. All right? Out in my backyard this summer, it looked like a snowstorm a couple of times with all of them. Can anybody say when we might have somebody in there to clean that out? Or is it a thing where we need to notify the EPA? Because I'm sure there's a lot of contaminated soil back there.
Well, let's hope that's not the case. As far as ownership, that is ours?
That's borough property. That is borough property. I've been arguing that for 30 years.
Not that I doubt you, but I'd like to hear that from our BA. Is that a fact?
I'd have to look into it, Mayor.
We're going to have to check it. Okay. In any case, it should be cleaned, in any case, whatever it is.
The last time I had an issue, Dolores Camelot was still the clerk, and at that point, high school kids were hanging out back there, cutting school, smoking cigarettes and whatnot, and there was mattresses back there. When I brought that issue to her attention, I says, that could be a fire hazard. She had that cleaned up, but it's overgrown. The weeds grow into my yard. I've been back there twice this season with my weed whacker to cut them down, and I've also sprayed them, and they still grow. Something's got to be done. It shouldn't be interfering with my livelihood.
No.
All right? That's one. While I'm here, I have a question for Chief Fligno, if you can turn your hat around and If you could turn your hat around and be the police chief tonight. This week, one of my neighbors had his catalytic converter stolen. And on the same night, they were trying to take another one, but he scared them away. Are there any plans with the police department to beef up patrols or put more officers on at night when these things are happening?
We beefed it up and we made an arrest the other night.
Okay.
A crew out of Patterson that is targeting airbags. Same crews.
Right.
And we turned our airbags off. We made an arrest and we're happy about that.
Okay, so we did beef up patrol there, okay. It's only because.
It's like trying to find, it's like trying to find a needle in a haystack with these guys. It's so difficult, but my guys actually got them. And we seized their vehicle and their cell phones and everything else. So that may lead to bigger and better things too.
Right, yeah. The only reason why I say that is because there are other neighborhoods like mine that are right off river, easy access to River Drive, get you down to Route 4, get you to 80, no problem, and you're out.
Absolutely right.
Um, on my block, you go up Philip to Elm. It's an incline. 5:30 in the morning when I'm going to work, every day, and I say every day seriously, there are cars parked within four inches of the corner. State law is 25 feet from an intersection, 15 feet from a crosswalk. I never see a ticket on any of these cars. People are there constantly. It's a hazard. And I mean a true hazard because you're coming uphill. You can't see anything on either side. And there's a guy that lives on Elm Street, leaves with a box truck in this morning. Not a big one, but him and I almost hit each other every morning.
Philip and.
Philip and Elm. Philip and Elm. On all four corners. I can't just say it's like the north, you know, the northeast corner or whatever. It's all four corners. They're right up to the edge.
Thank, thank you for bringing that. We'll take a look.
There are yellow lines, they're faint.
I know. I will say, we try, and I know you're saying it's a.
But I, I find it kind of odd.
You're right. But we try to give people, like there's, we're 10 pounds of, you know, wanting a five pound bag here with parking. So we try to not pick on those unless we get a complaint. Now we have a complaint and we'll check on it.
Well, there, there we go. I hate to say, I like to say, but there we go back to George and Story's old rule from years ago, resident parking. That would eliminate a lot of that.
It's a lot easier than it sounds.
Because there's also an ordinance, two family homes have to supply off-street parking for two vehicles per unit, which they don't. So that puts them on the street. You know, I got it right next door to me. I got like six cars. And only two cars are in the driveway, they're not in the garage. So those owners aren't supplying off-street parking for two vehicles per unit. So that creates a lot of congestion on the streets. And when people park right up to the corner, that becomes a hazard.
For sure.
Thank you. Not said. Oh, I haven't been here in a long time for work and everything. So the two new council members, I'd like to say welcome. I'd be easy with you tonight.
Well, we got a live crowd tonight, that's for sure. Does anyone else from the public care to speak?
Good evening. Jeffrey Freitag, 35 Tillman Drive. This is a question regarding number eight. And it is the first reading, I understand that. But I do have a question about the bond ordinance for the streetscape from Linden to Philip. What exactly, I understand it's going to stop at Philip. What exactly, other than the lights, the, I'll call them for lack of a better term, the Central Park style lights or whatever you want to call them. Who owns them in the end?
You want to go first, Chief?
So we've spoken to our engineer and they're recommending that we lease them from PSENG.
Okay.
This way, something happens to them, they're responsible, not us. If we buy them ourselves, then we have to stock extra ones at the DPW in case one gets knocked down, the whole nine yards. So we kind of decided that, and, and they told us most towns do the same thing. There's very few that he can even name that, that buy their own. So that's, that's the.
Okay, so they, they will maintain everything.
Correct, everything.
Because I know there's been one on Market Street that's been down for a long time.
Totally down?
Oh, yeah.
Whereabout?
Um, I believe it's in front of where the CVS.
I'll take a look.
Yeah, on that side. Okay. Secondly, are there going to be trees? So I know it's a streetscape in addition to that.
Uh, there's going to be like traffic calming stuff, like they're recommending possibly the bump outs like by Gilbert and, and stuff like that. That'll be part of it. And anything else as we go into the planning phase that we think may enhance the area? So trees might be part of that and stuff like that.
Okay, now, maybe I misunderstood, but there is no other money available right now to go any further beyond Philip.
Uh, we're, we just applied, yeah.
Okay, so there could be.
We, Jeff, we have, Mr. Freitag, we have federal tap money for the stretch from Philip to Route 4. We are, we were already awarded that last year, roughly $70,000, $100,000. But that has to be, it's a different project because they're, the, they're going to pick up the engineering cost, so we have to bid it separately and, and et cetera.
Now, this is going to be channeled into the road and conduit run along the boulevard there to put the, or are you going to go off of the other lights? I guess the electricity.
No, they run it under the, like, the sidewalks there.
Oh, in that area, in between the, the curb and, and the sidewalk.
The green area, yeah.
Okay. Now, is there any, I, I guess it's a dollar limitation, but it kind of seems odd to cut it off at Philip and not at least do Falmouth and Gilbert, where it would be a natural break, so to speak.
We're trying to use only grant money for this.
Okay, so it's just a matter of.
And then the next phase.
Okay.
Get as far until we get all the work.
Okay. So, um, okay. Okay, very well, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else care to speak? Yes, young lady. We all know who this lady is. I'll let her announce her own name.
Doris Swetzer, 124 Philip Avenue. Chief, I'd like to thank the police officers that came Wednesday night for the Elks. We have officers that stop in every time. They're fantastic with our kids. Let me tell you, Wednesday night with the Halloween, with the four police officers, we had them giggling. We had them dancing, we had them singing. Our kids thought it was the best thing to slice bread because, let me tell you, like everybody says, they don't know a police officer. But these four gentlemen, and I mean gentlemen, they were so, with the kids, they were, made them so feel comfortable. Even the parents said it does. Thank you so much for having them there because they do, really, they're my angels. You know that. I call them my angels, and they'll always be my angels. I thank you. All right. I have a question about the library for Mayor Coletti. I understand that you're going to rename the library?
Yes.
Why?
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 It's being dedicated to the late mayor?
It was already, the resolution was made the month after the mayor had passed away. The resolution was going to, was dedicated to the mayor automatically. I made the resolution. His name is already on that library.
Okay.
Why are you going to do it all over again?
Well, that's something I think you should ask the board.
Well, I got told it was because of you.
I'm sorry?
I got told it was because of you. This is what I was told. I'm not saying, you know, this is what I heard. Let's put it that way.
Well, you shouldn't listen to rumors.
That's why I'm coming here. That's why I'm coming here and asking you.
No. I, I don't care what name is up there. I care about the fact that if it's going to cost $30,000.
I was just going to say, ask the same thing.
Yeah.
To remove the name, his name is up there. I was understood, what, what somebody said to us, which was rumors around Elmore Park, that you want the Elmore Park off of there. You just want it Richard A. Moller Public Library.
Please, Doris, when you're referring, don't refer to me.
No, I'm asking you the questions. I'm just saying, this is what I was told. I'm asking you.
There's a board there that makes the decisions.
But you're on that board.
Yes, I am.
That's why I'm asking you. I couldn't make the beating on it.
And we haven't, haven't, had to bring it to a vote on whether that name is going to be changed or not. So what you're hearing and talking about right now is hearsay.
Well, that's why I'm coming.
And you know what we think we all have to say about hearsay.
I know. That's why I'm sitting here and asking you the question. Because like I stated, I wasn't there Monday night at the library meeting. I was at the Board of Health meeting. That's why I'm asking you, why would you want to change if his name's up there already?
I don't, I don't.
Well, I'm just saying, asking you if, you know.
You should be asking the board this because asking me, right now, it's, it's something that is still up in the air. And it was tabled as the last meeting. So we haven't voted on it. We haven't really had that much discussion. There's been some discussion about it. What we're doing, what's going to happen now is the three prices are going to be taken to change some letters up there. And if it's astronomical, I don't know where it'll go. But that's where it is right now. It's in the air.
That's why I came here, because I don't sit on the council no more, I don't sit on the library board.
You come to the wrong board. You should be, you come to the library board to ask them questions.
I can't because I'm at the Board of Health meeting the same night as you have the library board. I apologize. That's why I said I would come here and ask because people are asking me, how come they're going to change the library, the, the name? I said, no, they're not going to change. They said, oh, yeah, that's the rumor in town, that they're taking the sign down and they're going to change it. I said, well, it's going to cost money to take it down because we already had all the letters put up there and everything else. It's a beautiful, you know, honor to him